Good morning. It's June the 12th. We're doing a special meeting for the Brevard County Budget Information. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Steele, you're on the line, sir?
I am, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. It's going to be good to have you aboard soon. Glad you're wanting to listen in and get more information. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and so Commissioner Felton, will you do the pledge?
Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right, we are going to go ahead and move into our business. Commissioner Tobias, I'm going to let you start, sir, since you kind of asked for the meeting, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I wanted to answer a few questions. That's how I set up the notes. Why are we here today? What can we do? And what are the potential outcomes to this? So the preparation and adoption of the county budget follows some strict timelines. I've handed out a sheet with those included. This meeting is necessary to provide the county manager with direction in order for him to continue with the budget process within those time constraints. We've already directed the county manager to do this without a tax increase, according to Florida Statute 200.065, or breaking the cap, which is Section 2.9.3.1A of the Brevard County Charter. However, since our last meeting, the county manager has received multiple constitutional office budgets requesting increases for the 2324 budget year, well above the 3% cap. The supervisor elections asked for an increase of 546.66% above the 3% charter cap. The property appraiser asked for an increase of 124.33% above the 3% charter cap. And the tax collector does not submit their budget until August 1st. However, the increase last year was 226% above the 3% charter cap. Our only options to ensure long-term financial health of this organization are: A, go back on our word and not increase taxes and bust the cap. Two, or sorry, B, cut services such as parks and roads. Or three, and I think this is the best option here, work with the charter offices to be more reasonable and examine their budgets for reductions in spending. Again, hopefully, that's where the focus will be. What can we do now? And I've got a slide up here. Our shared goal, if I could get that slide. There we go. Super. Our shared goal always should be transparency. As you see, the mission statement of the supervisor election has transparency. The property appraiser put that in her budget message. And when I was getting a title on a car this past week, the wall of the tax collector's office had transparency. It's wonderful that this is shared amongst all of us. So what my office did, and I was hoping that I would get some support of the board that we could do this, was to send letters to each of the offices to encourage them to adhere to the same limitations that we have under the charter cap. They provide line item detail for their budgets. We provide these things in our county budget. And thanks to Chair Pritchett, we also do this in our bill folder from meeting to meeting and month to month. All this information, to be clear, that will be requested, is already subject to public record. I have attached the letters and the questions that my offices come up with and would certainly appreciate any suggestions that the board may have. To be clear, this is only about transparency and wanted to look retrospectively at the last two years' budgets so we can see what can be changed and work on the baseline. Considering the timeline that was already referenced in the handout there, it is important that these responses be provided back to the board within 10 business days, which would be close of business, June 23rd of 2023. So, I know I only put three up there, so there are, let me talk about certain offices that, and I think should not be, that I did not include in those letters. First of all, the sheriff, and let me tell you why. The level of detail provided in his 76-page budget clearly identifies the reasons for his requests as well as details for said expenditures that are not in certainly the other provided budget. These include comparisons with neighboring counties, jails, salaries, budget. They provide estimations for the following year and expense justifications. They have detailed breakdowns of contracted services with explanations. There's a section on travel with detailed explanation of who and why. There are unique mandates such as FRS, healthcare, fringe benefits recently amended to state statute in CSHP 239, and increased medical and food cost services at the county jail. The sheriff removed all capital requests for the fiscal year '23 budget out of appreciation for the charter cap. Brevard County is 10th most populous county in the state, yet ranks 11th in lowest funding of the 66 Florida counties in law enforcement per capita expenditure. While this request is still above the cap, it is lower than the property appraiser, tax collector, as well as the supervisor election. And let me point one other thing that makes the sheriff unique. He is the only charter office that sends his budget directly to us and comes to our offices, at least come to my office multiple times along with his budget chief, to explain his budget. So that's number one. Number two, the clerk of the court. The budget request from the clerk of the court was a 3% increase. So she adhered to the cap and acted in a very conservative manner. The public defender, let me, Blaze Tretis sent a letter to the Brevard Board on April 21st of 2023. I'm sure you saw it. Mr. Tretis took to action to streamline his office and reduce his budgetary needs for the 2324 year. The office faces the same pressures as others, but he managed to reduce its monetary needs. This is a reduction of $182,374. It is significant and demonstrates Mr. Tretis's financially conservative principles. The state attorney, the state attorney Phil Archer, has a statutory cap of 1.5% increase according to Florida Statute 29.0084. To be clear, I want to thank our partners Wayne Ivy, Rachel Sadoff, Blaze Tretis, and Phil Archer for coming to us with a conservative budget and allowing us to focus our efforts on examining just a few of the remaining budgets. So, I hope the offices would return this letter. We'll make a motion that this be sent out on the board. And our county manager can continue to work with the constitutional officers to encourage them to bring down their baseline and come as close to that 3% as possible. So the motion I have, the letters, as well as the questions were included-
Commissioner Tobias, can we do your motion in a minute, just because I have two cards?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
But thank you for all that information and all the work you've done. So I'm going to call these real quick. So I have two people that are going to speak this morning, and so I'm going to call Mr. Richard Hefelfinger.
Good morning. Rick Hefelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida, wonderful District 1. We're at the point where I was afraid we're at. This is the heads up, right? I have, I appreciate Commissioner Tobias's overview. I was asking a question, why are we here? Now, these guys, you've got some kind of a threshold, I guess. How much do you have to go above the cap before you get a request for a line item budget? I haven't seen anybody's budgets. You obviously have, and you've calculated some increase. Where is that transparency to the citizen on the webpage? Does all the other departments in here got any budget up there? I mean, we're supposed to have a roundtable where we could get some presentations. We didn't get that. So I'm wondering, who else is laying out there in the weeds? I mean, and you stated that, was it tax collector wasn't due yet because of the timeline? And you said it was a strict timeline. Well, you guys are supposed to have a roundtable. You didn't do that. So how strict is that? I guess my concern is, if you're going to go out and ask these big offenders, asking for this budget increase, to do line item budgets, I'd appreciate it if you guys would do that, too, because I haven't seen any budgets. And I've looked on the webpage. Maybe you could help me and answer that question. But I haven't seen you guys show any line item stuff of where you're going to be. Are these going to be the only guys busting the cap, or are they just the first? So I'd like to kind of know where you guys are with your departments. Because I imagine that, you know, cost of fuel, all those things that these other guys are crying, you know? And I hope, do we actually see, because this is going to be the first time I really paid attention to the budget cycle overall. Are we going to see line item on everybody? Is that a standard thing? It's shocking that you have to ask for that. But, I mean, I would like to see this letter go to every department that asks for money from the taxpayers. I really would. And that's all I got, and if you can answer any of those questions, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Tobias.
Mr. Hefelfinger, just a heads up, the budget is being crafted by the county manager. It's his responsibility. So that, these are requests made. I have the requests. I'd be more than willing, you can call my office, I'd be more than willing. But the county budget at large, the first budget hearing is September 5th. It will be published for the budget hearing and for a final publish, a final public hearing on September 15th. And the final budget hearing will be September 19th. So those are the full budget. These are just requests that have come from the constitutional offices. Ours is not crafted yet.
And Commissioner Tobias, we also requested the county manager not to go above that CPI as well. So we're confident he'll come back with that. He always abides by that. Ms. Sandra Sullivan?
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. Hey, it's June. You guys are supposed to be on break, right? So I appreciate that you're in here for this very important, special meeting to let us know about these huge increases, especially the 546.66 above the cap. That's almost 550%. That's insane. That's not fiscal conservative. And I really appreciate the commissioner bringing up about transparency, how this is a priority of all the three offices. It should be also the priority of our county commissioners. So I just want to mention that, you know, obviously, these budgets concern us and perhaps our constitutional offices should always be submitting their budgets with line items just so that you guys can do your planning purposes. But let's go back to, related to this, is the county, the county budget is in the February workshop. Under Board Reports, the county manager brought up that he wanted to cancel that meeting. And that motion was made by Tobias, who's saying we should have transparency on this. But he made the motion to cancel that meeting, and Commissioner Feltonner seconded it. So where's the transparency on the county on the workshop? So here's one of the slides. I had to do a records request for the presentations, for the budget workshop presentation. This is one of the slides. This is transportation. This is current estimate of unfunded capacity improvements, $699 million, okay? So I've been coming up here for years saying, hey, guys, you're kicking the can down the road. You're going to do this like the dump, where you wait until the dump runs out of space before you start building a dump that takes five years to build? Are you going to kick the can down on impact fees on transportation that haven't been updated in 23 years? You're going to kick that can down the road until it's a crisis? And then in the last meeting, or two meetings ago, you approved a roadway study for $1 million for Grissom Road, which is not even on the TPO plan. So where's coordination there? Whoa, then we find out, oh, yeah, you met with the lobbyists, and they want an access road. So in the last meeting, you put an ad on in the last minute. And on something that, when I looked online, is a giant borough pit next to Grissom Road. So how's that sort of development more likely? But I just wanted to say this. I want to remind you all that doing motions under Board Reports is not allowed unless it's an emergency. That's what it says in your BCC 97. So maybe we should be following the rules. And maybe our county commissioners should be embracing the very transparency that they're calling on from our constitutional offices. Thank you.
All right, I have one more card from Chief Judge Rick Sessler. Welcome to our area, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to address you all briefly because I was told that this meeting was called this morning. Essentially, for everyone, I've talked with a few of you, but the Harriet Timor Justice Center was, began construction originally in 1996. It was supposed to be done in three phases. The first phase was completed in the early 2000s. And then the expansion for $13.5 million of 60,000 square feet was completed in approximately 2002. The third phase, which was also the second expansion, was to be slated to begin in 2008 and had a budget by the county commission at the time for $23.5 million to complete the construction, have it begin in 2008. Unfortunately, because of the global financial market crisis, the project was stalled, and it never occurred. That doesn't mean that we don't have the need for the expansion. We essentially play musical courtrooms, so to speak. We have safety and security concerns. We have family trials and things of that nature that are in hearing rooms by judges' chambers where there's not enough security. It is, since 1996, we've had an increase in the number of judges, the number of magistrates, the number of cases, of course, and more so since 2008. And as a result, we don't have the adequate space in order to provide the interest of justice to be served to our citizens. I have been working and received $5.5 million from the state budget, as long as the government, governor doesn't line item veto it. But I received $5.5 million to be put towards this expansion of the project from the House and the Senate. And at this point, it's something that's agreed upon. So as long as he doesn't veto it, it's something that this county could use. But of course, we'd need the monies also from the county to complete the expansion project. Because of course, back in 2008, it was $23.5 million that was budgeted, and you have an increase in construction costs since that time. So the judicial change or conference rooms, we hold the sensitive hearings. The sheriff's office don't have the ability to have the same security in that aspect. We do play, like I stated, musical courtrooms. So it's something that I want to put in the county's mindset, so to speak, because I also don't want to lose, if we do have the approval of the $5.5 million from the governor, that would be something that this county would be receiving and being used towards that expansion. I don't want, after the work that I put forth, to lose that. The state funds could be used to bridge whatever gap that you all would have for the courthouse expansion, if you could do so. But I wanted to make sure, so we could have the independence and partiality and integrity of the judicial branch and to be able to serve the citizens of Brevard County, that that was just something that was put into your heads to also be considering possibly this morning. And if there are any questions.
Thank you, Judge. I know Commissioner Felton, you have, is that a new or old light, Commissioner Tobias? Okay, Commissioner Felton?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm well. Thanks for coming here. The expansion today, in today's dollars, what would you expect that to cost?
Well, my thought process, as far as you have 52% increase in costs from the 23.5 million. So when I was trying to figure the amount, approximately around $35, $36 million. But then, again, if we have the $5.5 million, then that would be something to help in bridge the gap.
I understand. I think the number that had been mentioned around here was closer to $50 million. And of course, you know, with each road project, the numbers are just going, anything, construction, just has been going up significantly.
I was just using what the, so my, the numbers that I used was based upon the fact of it was 23.5 in 2008. There's a 52% increase in the construction costs since then. So if you take that, that's approximately about $12 to $13 million. So that's where I'm getting, as far as that increase in the construction costs. But then again, I know those are a daily adjustment in today's world, unfortunately. So I know sometimes that's an issue as well.
Let me ask another question. And I've spent some time touring the courthouses and appreciate everybody showing me the good and the bad. And the Melbourne courthouse, I know it's, maybe not everyone wants to go down there, but, and maybe we're not going to take inmates down there in the future because of concerns there. But certainly, two civil judges, a family judge could be down there. So here's my question for you, just quickly. The second floor is almost completely unused now, and I think a modern courtroom could be located there. What do you think about that as a stopgap, at least?
Okay, so there is, at this point, there are only two courtrooms that are at the Melbourne courthouse. Essentially, we do use the courtroom for DOR hearings, and then the other one is currently with a civil judge. The other aspect that we are going to do is take a family magistrate, to put a family magistrate in that location. And that's what's being considered for the next fiscal year when a current county judge moves forward to the Vieira courthouse, moves from there to the Vieira courthouse. So right now, there's only those two courtrooms, so that's what could be used. Otherwise, we could put a family judge there, but it still doesn't change the aspect that we, it will not still make the capacity of the Vieira courthouse still sufficient to accommodate everyone. It is literally a juggling of courtrooms.
If we built a modern courtroom on the second floor, would you locate a judge, or is that just not workable? Locate a judge from Vieira?
It can be workable. That would be possibly for the, possibly for the next chief judge, because by the time that would be completed is after my term.
Yes, okay. All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Judge, first of all, what you do is very important, and you very appreciate it for the job and the commitment that you all do and accomplish in our county. And we're certainly throwing more population at you these days. We, I talked to the county manager a while ago, and he was going to try to do a study, but it came back higher than what he was comfortable being able to do without us-
That's my understanding.
-in agreement with it. So Commissioner, I would just ask that we allow the county manager to have the funding. And county manager, how much would it cost to do a funding for them to do a study to help them maybe with space or what we need to do to move forward? Because we certainly couldn't even do this without some type of information coming back of cost and what's needed.
Yeah, Commissioner, that would depend on the nature of the study. Initially, several months ago, when we started looking at this again, we put out, and I spoke to Public Works, to get a comprehensive countywide for court needs, to look at it on a very comprehensive basis for efficiency as well. And we were hoping it was going to come in the area of $50,000 or $60,000. It came back in at $170,000. In light of the fact that during that time, the state put in the $5.5 million that the judge was speaking about for expansion at the Moore Justice Center, we have not moved forward with any study. And one of the things we were looking at is, should we narrow the scope of what is looked at to see what the needs are? And I believe there were three as it relates to the Moore Justice Center. One was security in the lobby area. A second was issues related to jury room. And a third would be another courtroom.
Additional court, at least.
Right, right. And so, you know, whether that need is the most appropriate need and then how we would do that would be something that, if the board directed, we would, you know, seek to get the scope of the study revised to look at that specifically in light of what the county's overall needs might be. And we could bring back an estimate to the board or move forward if the board gave us some level of comfort in terms of what you would like to see done.
Thank you, sir. So I'm a request of the board. I know since it's the first time you've heard of it, that maybe at the next meeting, we have time to get with the county manager and kind of figure out what it is we might need to look at and what costs we would be able to put towards some type of moving forward measure for you, ma'am. And that way, we'll know, too, if you got the $5.5 million. So I think if the next meeting, if you guys would consider doing that, just gathering some information and be ready to come back for conversation next meeting. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your efforts with the state legislature. Madam Chair, a couple of quick questions. If that doesn't get line itemed out of the budget, is there a timeframe for that $5.5 million, or is that held in trust?
To be perfectly candid, I'm not sure. I have not looked at that, so I do not have the answer to that.
Okay. And to follow up, the $5.5-
I don't believe it's held in trust. I believe it's not, but-
Okay. The $5.5 million, would the study for the justice, the expansion or renovation or whatever it is for the Justice, Harriet Timor Justice Center, would that fall within the scope of that $5.5 million?
Well, it has to be used towards the expansion, is my understanding. So a study would be towards the expansion, so you all would also better know that as well. But that's where the funding would have to move towards, is for the expansion project. But that's where the funding would have to move towards, is for the expansion project.
Of that particular facility.
Of that particular facility.
So Madam, Madam Chair, I don't know when the governor is going to sign the budget, but when he does, and if that's there, it sounds as though we would have some resources to narrow the scope so we could tap into that, those funds and, and maybe accomplish this with the funds that have been passed down from, from the legislature through the judge's hard work. Sorry.
I'll just suggest quickly that we do need to take another look at the Melbourne courthouse. There's, the second floor is unused. So there's, there's space.
The second floor, though, still has, as, as far as you're indicating, I mean, it still has spacing that's, I believe, used there.
I think the state is storing case files up there right now. When I went on a tour, that was the only thing I think was up there, my recollection.
And I do want to say, so the idea of the expansion, because originally there were plans done, and again, back in 2008, there are plans. The idea was to have a courtroom on each floor, so it would be four courtrooms that would be added, is what the, the thoughts would be for, to allow for everyone to be able to have kind of their own courtroom, not being in a box. We have judges even that were creating space, like downstairs in the basement, kind of with chambers and everything else, or not basement, but the first floor. So creating space in order to accommodate people and magistrates. So just to let everyone know.
Okay. So I'm thinking hopefully by the next meeting, we'll know if he signed the, the budget. And Mr. Abate, if you would, I think, figure out what you think we need to narrow this down to, talk to each one of us so we can kind of figure it out. So I think we're needing space, meet needs of safety and what's available out there. So again, I think if, if you guys spend a little bit of time, if you would, then we'll come back next meeting and hopefully have some kind of direction for the community and for you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time this morning. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you. All right. That's all the public comment cards. Commissioner Tobias, I'm going to turn this back to you right now, sir.
Again, Madam Chair, thank you for your time and thank you as the, in namesake only, Vice Vice Chair. I certainly don't have the authority to do this, so I, I appreciate your help. But the motion would be to authorize the chair to email attached letters and questions to Brevard County Tax Collector, Property Appraiser and Supervisor election on behalf of the Board of County, Board, Brevard County Board of County Commissioners. If a comprehensive response has not been received by the close of business Friday, June 23rd, 2023, the county attorney shall be authorized to rewrite and submit a public record request to each constitutional officer for any information that was not provided back to the board in response to the questions included in the letter. That would be the motion, Madam Chair, unless anyone had any changes, additions or subtractions from the questions that were provided in the agenda.
Before we call for a second, I want to make just a couple of comments. First of all, the constitutional officers are not our enemies, they're wonderful people. I, I really would have, none of them are here, correct? It, it would have been wonderful to have at least representatives show up to answer some of the questions. Here's the thing, is public has a lot of questions about these things, and if a commissioner does, it's just wonderful to get the answers. There's a probably extremely good chance that a lot of these things are appropriate, but since we don't have the ability to ask the questions which make it comfortable for the public, that has given me a little bit of concern right now. Commissioner Tobias, I wasn't going to agree with sending the letter, because I was hoping they were going to be here, but since they're not here, I, I don't know what else to do to not get questions answered. But again, I, I understand what, what your concern is, and, and some of these would have been kind of interesting to hear, because we, we're all accountable for what we're doing. And not that they're not accountable, not that it's not already public record, but since these questions have been asked, I, I think we need to have them answered. Because we're trying to, of course, we're always running a tight budget up here, and my goodness, we're always under the scope of everything. Thank you, Mr. Rick. You're, you're good at that for us, too. But, but we're always under that. So here's the thing, is, is when these other budgets come in a little higher, and the county manager will do what we ask, he'll, he'll keep it under. But if it's more than we can do, we have to cut other things, which it's, it's almost not fair for other departments if there's something very, very important. So I, I just think answering questions today would have been a very, very nice thing. Commissioner Tobias, I, I almost would rather if we didn't like do, do the thing that you've got 10 days or whatever, I think maybe let them respond back, and if it's not appropriate, maybe move forward after that. But I know we're on a time crunch, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. I, if, if you're more comfortable going with 15 days, I, we, I just don't want to call another, I just don't want to call another meeting.
I know. I know. And that's about when we come back, too.
Okay.
So I think that's fair. I would have loved if they would have been here today and just answered some questions. It would have been probably very comfortable.
In fairness and deference to all of those folks, I didn't ask them to be here. I don't know how much they monitor the, the, our agenda. So with your permission, I'd go back and change the motion to close of business June the 28th.
Okay. Because it's already public record, and they're just going to get that data together. And what this is doing is it's making it very comfortable for the public to hear it and, and maybe get a comfort level with it as well. So I'm, I'm not opposed to that, sir.
Okay.
All right. I don't have any other lights. Mr. Goodson, you're trying to push your light, right?
Yep. Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Tobias, can I ask this, these three questions? Supervisor elections from 2022 to 2023 was an 8% increase, correct?
Uh, I'm sorry.
2022 to 2023, was it an 8% increase in their budget?
Uh, I'm, I'm looking, the chart I handed out was a cumulative total.
Correct.
So I have the cumulative totals in front of me. I don't have the annual totals in front of me.
Okay.
But the, the, the stuff I received is off the same sheet of paper you're looking at, which came from the budget office, not my office.
Okay.
So I, I would punt over there.
Okay. Then may I revert to the county manager to answer that question?
Yes.
Jill. So, good morning, Commissioner. If I understand the question correctly, you're looking at the supervisor of elections budget and the fiscal year '24 request, what the increase was compared to fiscal year '23.
No, I'm asking you from 2022 to 2023, was there a request 8% increase during that time? By this sheet right here.
The supervisor of elections from '22 to '23, that increase in the general fund request was actually 4.2%.
Oh, okay. I'm, I don't know where, that's all right. Now then, could you tell me in the property appraisers, from 2022 to 2023?
That one was 5.13%.
Okay. Then go to the tax collector's office. From '22 to '23, what was their increase?
For the general fund, 9.78%.
Is there, okay, now this would be, Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
You're on, sir.
Okay. Can you tell me why they were over the cap? Was there a reason that you just, that you might remember? I'm asking.
Those were the budget requests that they submitted, and I know they included cost of living adjustments, health insurance premium increases and things of that nature.
Would those numbers you gave me pretty much be in line with other departments? Or would they be high or be in middle?
That would be, Commissioner, it would depend on the nature of the department. We have probably 20 departments of right of them. They were all, our departments were all asked to come in within, make their best efforts to come in with 3%. I'm not going to say that everyone made it within 3%, but most of them tried to. And let me augment a little bit about what Jill said. Over the last couple of years, there were a few positions in the property appraiser, I do know. I don't know if it was in '22, '23 or the prior year. She did add one or two important positions that she felt were important. And the other thing I would say is that in past year or two, the supervisor elections was also driven by some homeland security issues in terms of things that she needed to do and supervisor needed to do to augment their various facilities to meet the standards that were being required of them. And that's what they came forward with, as I recall in their budget presentations.
Okay. Supervisor elections, of elections, 4.2 increase, but yet 2024 requests 134% increase? How does, how does that number come around?
19.4. That's the cumulative.
Well, yeah, right there. Right there's 134%.
I know. Cumulative.
The 19.4% that, from budget to budget, that increase was, is attributable primarily to two costs for postage and labor-related costs for the upcoming elections. One thing that I was told by the supervisor was that, you know, some of the printing costs are higher than they nor, they would have otherwise been because they have to get that printing done in the next fiscal year, even though the election will be happening after October 1. So it was a half, about half of it was labor costs and the other half was printing-related costs because of the number of elections that would be occurring in 2024, calendar year.
Okay. Last question to you, Frank. Would you, or do you know, if this is pretty much, if you looked at a county our size somewhere else, would they be saying the same thing or no idea?
Honestly, Commissioner, I could not tell you the comparative for the charter officers, similar to what the sheriff did. I don't have that information readily available.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Good questions, Commissioner Goodson. And, and again, it would have been nice to have just some communication for everybody to kind of find out what the increased costs are. County manager, I really appreciate you helping with some of that. So, because like if it's going to increase that much, my, my question would be if it's for just that year, is it going to go down consistently for the next time? I mean, is this a one-time cost? So, which I'm not seeing that in any of our budgets. So anyways, I, I, I don't think it hurts to answer these questions because it's kind of our job to just kind of ask them a bit so that everybody can know. So Commissioner Tobias, thank you for, for asking the questions. Did you want to say something or you were good or?
I think your comment about will budgets go down the, the following year, I, I think inflation is here to stay. So I don't, I don't think that's a realistic expectation.
Well, it would be tough going up, you know, 19% and not seeing it at least come down a little bit for the next year, because we have to build on that next budget. So every time it goes up, that's your new, new base to try to move forward. And I, I do realize in the sheriff's, because it was interesting, too, that he has the FRS situation going on, and everything he does is like a three multiplier. So that's a big chunk of his budget. There's not a lot he can do with that. But again, totally respect all these people, but information is always a good thing. So Commissioner Tobias, I do have your motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes three in favor and one opposed. And you gave some pretty good information, sir. So thank you for that. And do I have any other, I guess we'll just go through this real quick and see if anybody has anything that they want to comment on. Mr. Goodson?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to say this one time. This was not the results of a catfight with Evelyn. I had a surgery done on my gland, and it, they say everything's fine, but if not, I'm in the process of getting a parrot sent on my shoulder so that can answer multiple questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And we're, we're very glad that your sense of humor hasn't been impaired.
He wasn't a proctologist.
Oh, Commissioner Goodson. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On March 21st, 2023, I brought the idea of transferring funds to the Brevard Public Schools to cover half the cost in printing and mailing for new voter registration cards. On May 30th, and the board was pretty supportive there, I neglected to have a motion. On May 30th, the school board voted to realign their districts to match the Brevard County Commission districts, and the funding was mentioned at that meeting. Supervisor of Elections Office Maria Mayer was extremely helpful and mentioned there would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 101,817 voter cards that would need to be changed. At 63 cents, a first-class stamp mailed out individually, that's $64,144.71. So to effectuate the idea brought up through a formal motion, I moved to transfer $32,072.36 in CARES funding, again, CARES funding that, that in the District III office, to the Brevard County Public School Board for the purpose of covering partial costs resulting from the school board realigning or redistricting process to realign with the, with ours.
Okay. So I have a motion. How much money you got left in that?
Madam Chair, the rest is going to Parks, Hoover.
I think that was mine, too.
So that's where it'll be going.
Okay. Very good.
For clarification, I'm sorry, it would be the ARPA funding, not the CARES funding.
I apologize.
But you cared deeply about the ARPA.
We have so much money, Madam Chair. I have, ARPA, I apologize.
Yeah, well, that's all dried up now, too. Okay. So wonderful. ARPA was a good choice for that. I have a motion. Commissioner Felton, sir?
I just want to make a quick question. Is, is it a share situation with the school district? They're paying some portion and the board's paying the other portion?
Madam Chair, all I can tell you is the offer that I made to the school board, I, I honestly have not had that conversation with anyone on the school board, where the other half would be coming from if they don't pay for it. I mean, odds are, we'll be paying for it with an increased cost, one way or another. This would, just to effectuate the promise that I made.
Madam Chair, but they're expecting it to, to be $60,000? No?
Not saying no, just something else.
Yeah. The best I could, I said mailing, and, and again, I got those numbers from the supervisor on May 31st at 101,817, and the first-class stamp, again, 63 cents has gone up. So that's how I arrived at that number.
Would you be opposed to putting this on the agenda in July? And we asked them, and we asked them to share on this. I, I think if, I'm not trying to be difficult, but you know, in, in fairness, you know, the county went through redistricting, and they, they did it timely, even though the data came late. Okay? We can, we can blame the Washington for that. And, but we got through it and we got it done, and we sent the cards timely. And the school district at the time chose not to do it. For whatever reason, they chose not to do it. And so we're, we're thinking of spending, spending this money to, quite frankly, I think, take care of a, a situation that they should have done two years ago. All I'm asking is, could they at least split it with us?
Madam Chair?
And I think that'd be better for an agenda item later.
I have, this was something brought up at a previous meeting. The offer was made, and again, I can't uniformly, unilaterally offer that money. That's why it had to be through a motion. I wanted to bring it up again. I hope the school board hears that. If you're more, if, if you want, and if I can hopefully have a chance of earning your vote in July, so I can effectuate that promise, I would be more than willing to do that.
I'd feel better about it.
Okay. So Madam Chair?
Thank you.
I'd like to pull back that motion or table it-
Yes, sir.
-until the first meeting in July.
Are stamps 63 cents each now?
They are, Madam Chair. I had to look that one up.
I do everything electronically, and I've got a roll of stamp at my house. I've had for about a year. I had no clue. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Commissioner Felton, sir?
That was no light. Or that was, oh, on the board report. I don't have anything.
All right. And I have no board report either, other than to mention, Mr. Still will be looking forward to serving with you starting in July, sir, and looking forward to the, the extra vote coming along and-
And we appreciate Alex here today.
We do appreciate Alex here today. Thank you, sir. And, and Commissioner Still, I'm hoping you vote with, like I do, so. All right. Call this meeting-
I will be doing a lot of, a lot of listening, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.[1755.76] Thank you, sir. And on that, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.